Okay, the chair is gonna start.
Thank you very much.
You're outside, go ahead.
All right, this is a meeting of the Committee to Review Town Council Rules and the Town Code on February 10th, 2025 at 3:00 PM in the Selectmen's Conference Room. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the Town of Barnstable's Government Access Channel. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Chair must inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. And none, this meeting will be replayed via Xfinity Channel 8 or High Definition Channel 1072. It may also be accessed via the Government Access Channel Live Video On-Demand Archives on the Town of Barnstable's website. So, roll call, please.
Counselors, Burdick, Lutke.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yeah.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Clark.
Here.
You have quorum, and we're also joined by Town Attorney Karen Nobur and Assistant Town Attorney Allison Cogliano via Zoom.
Good afternoon.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you Karen, would you mind reviewing with us, please? And we were saying before the meeting started that it was good to have a break and readdress these updated rules with a fresh look, so thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Councilwoman. I'm actually, I'm not sure if I have the red line, I may have the red line version in front of me, I guess I want to...
How would you like to do it? Would you like to just go through it?
Do you wanna raise questions?
I know you have some questions.
That you sent me earlier today, and however you would like to do it.
I don't think that we benefit much by going by the red line version. Yeah, I think that if we just go through the final version.
Can we go through your questions?
Yes.
Because I think that's most important, because I mean, we've all been reading the final version, so if we had big things, we probably would have.
Yeah.
Or we have them to talk about here, so maybe we could go through the question.
Sorry, I just said this to Karen this morning, but after I review this, so I said on page two of the final, on Rule 3 and 4, there's references made to presiding officers in rotating order. And I wrote, as I was reflecting on this, would this be rotated throughout the year, or does it always refer to Precinct 1, then Precinct 2?
So, so I talked to the town clerk earlier today, she's the one who oversees that, and she said, yeah, she said that it rotates throughout the year, it starts out at 1, it rotates throughout the year, and it does reset when the council leadership gets elected.
So do you think we should clarify that?
I don't think it's necessary, I think it's up to you, but I think, you know, I think...
But I think we had consecutive meetings where Counselor Starr was referenced more than once.
Because one meeting wasn't an equal meeting.
Oh, that's true, our initial meeting.
It wasn't actually a meeting.
That's right, that's right, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, that's why I was, my recollection, okay, that's fine. Rule 5.
What page you were?
Rule 3.
Page 3.
Page 3. Rule 5C. 4, 1. 1. So, it mentions that the records reflect...
You were asking about counselors coming late as opposed to not attending.
Being absent, right.
Yeah, and I guess I feel like, I think the reason we want counselors to tell the president that they're gonna be running late is so that we know whether there's gonna be a quorum problem or not, right?
Yep.
So, if we know for sure people aren't gonna be there, then we know how many counselors are going to attend. If someone knows they're going to be there, but they're going to be late, it's helpful, I think, to have that information to figure out, do we need to reschedule the meeting, can we, you know, should we just wait a few more minutes, or that kind of thing? But I think in terms of the announcements that get made at the beginning, I think it's whoever's present or absent when the meeting starts. And then, so, someone who's completely late is absent, and then when they show up, we say in the rules, then the president should announce their arrival, and that way it's on the record. But I think until they actually do show up, they're absent.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I just noticed that it mentioned that the clerk should record that. If somebody's gonna be absent, so I didn't know if, if somebody's late, we don't know if they're absent or just late. They could be on an accident. So that's, that's what, how that occurred to me. On Rule 6D, number 3.
So that was, that was interesting, and I read a little bit in, well, not a little bit, I read a lot, in Mason's and in Roberts, since I now have both books.
If you don't mind, let me explain what my issue was.
Sure, go ahead.
So on number 3, Rule 6D, it says to lay on the table, and I wrote, is that the same as to table an agenda item? For the naive public, for them to understand. Go ahead Karen, thank you.
So, so again, looking at sort of the guidance from both sources, which were very consistent, and it looks to me that to table something is sort of a misnomer, and it's not really a term of art, and it gets confused with other motions, and they were saying people use it incorrectly when they really mean this and not that. So I think sort of the three motions to think about are the motion to postpone to a certain date, which I think is pretty clear, it's you pick a date, and then you're gonna get back to it. The motion to postpone indefinitely, which is actually sort of a polite way of killing the item. And that's what both books basically say, it's a way to kill the item without forcing people to actually take a vote on the item. That's a motion to postpone indefinitely. But a motion to lay on the table is not intended to kill an item. It's intended, and I'm gonna read from Mason's, "The purpose of the motion to lay on the table is to enable the body to lay aside the pending question in such a way that its consideration may be resumed at the will of the body and in preference to new questions competing with it for consideration. The motion to lay on the table, being non-debatable and requiring but of a majority vote, serves this purpose." So the point of that is to say, we really need to deal with something else right now, so let's lay this on the table, but the intent is to come back to it, whether you do it at that meeting or at a different meeting. So, I think what both books were saying is it sometimes gets confused with the motion to postpone indefinitely, but the point of that is to kill it, whereas laying on the table is, the point of that is not to kill it, it's to take a break while you deal with something else. And they both sort of said people use the term, well, I think Roberts said people use the term to table the item sort of incorrectly to mean one of those things that it really isn't. So I don't know if that really answers your question, but I think lay on the table, I think we just should avoid saying table this item, that's my takeaway from that.
Okay.
Now, is this a complete list? It says it's an order of preference, so you'd have to deal with, you know, 1 or 2 or 3 before you could do another one, or? And is it exhaustive, Karen, or are there more motions that you could make?
I, I would have, my guess is it's not exhaustive, I can't imagine this is every motion you could ever make. I can, I didn't look at it from that point of view, I think I looked at it from what was in the rules initially. I don't know, I can't remember now if I added anything that has come up that I thought would be helpful to include. And then I did add some language, I think, about whether it's debatable or not debatable, based on the guidance, so that we wouldn't have to scramble when something comes up.
It just says it's in order of preference. As if the, to adjourn is the first preference you would have, I mean, what does that mean, in order of preference?
Well, I think it means if you're making a motion to adjourn, someone else can't make a motion to do one of these other things until you deal with that first.
So you have to, if someone, if it got absurd, I mean, someone could go write down this list and keep making motions, and you'd have to deal with that one before you could move to another one?
Right, I mean, it basically just says, if you've made, picked one of these motions, if that is, if that is in order of preference before a different motion, you would have to deal with that motion before taking up a different one.
And that's how they're...
Supersedes it.
But that's how it's listed in Mason's?
Yes, I did not do a compare for Roberts.
Okay, interesting.
Number 4, motion for the previous question, is that what we're commonly called, I wanna move the question?
Yes, that is the same thing, and, and I'm just thinking, I don't, I believe when I went through the motions, I did go through the order of preference, but I was also working off of what was in our rules previously.
Because when Counselor Burdick always says call the question, I don't see that here.
Yep.
That is, that is number 4, that's the previous question.
So he should be saying, previous question? Look at 6E.
He addressed this in one of the rules, and I can't find it.
Look at 6E.
Previous question.
Okay.
Shall be put forward as I call the question.
Oh, I moved the question, okay.
The language is used interchangeably, so I incorporated all of it into the rules so that we kind of knew what we were saying.
Okay.
And we would basically, it would, we would say, I make a motion to limit or extend the limits of this debate. That would be, like, you would raise your hand, you would be acknowledged by the chair or the presiding officer, and you'd say, I make a motion to limit or extend the limits of debate. And then, somebody would have to second that, and then it would be voted on?
Yeah, I would have to, I would have to, I would have to look that up to see, it seems to me like you would probably wanna say something more, like, you wanna just say, I wanna, I wanna extend the debate so that we keep talking about it, or whether you say, I wanna extend this debate further? I'd have to look that up.
But I guess I'm just, the only reason I'm questioning is just because the whole thing about Counselor Burdick always saying, I call, I move the question, that, you know, he raises his hand, he gets acknowledged, he says, I move the question, we basically all just zip up, and then we vote on whether that, we all agree with that or not. So I would imagine the same things could be said here, where somebody could say, I move to limit or extend the limits of debate, Betty might say, second, then we take a vote, and then we would vote whether we are going to limit or extend the limits, or we don't limit or... Correct?
Right, the difference with move the question is it forces you to actually, if it passes, to take a vote on the main motion, write that in there.
I guess what I'm saying is I'm asking how we would use these, like, 6E is used, and I think that's what you're asking, Betty, is like, well, what would we say?
Wondering, because in 6E, it says, this particular motion requires a 2/3s vote. Does that mean all of these, Karen, require a 2/3s vote? So if you just get a simple majority, then the motion fails? Do they all require?
6E is only on calling the question, moving the question, that requires a 2/3s vote.
All the other motions are simple majority?
Yes.
Why is that? There's some rationale for that?
I can go back and read, I mean, I wasn't making up the quantum of votes, it comes from the guidance.
Yeah, just...
Do we wanna...
I think the rationale for that is because moving the question forces you to stop debate on the item and take an actual vote. So I think it requires that higher quantum of vote, because it's, you're ending the discussion and you're right then and there, and you're taking the vote.
But if you're withdrawing it, you're doing the same thing, I mean, you're withdrawing it, I remember we had that...
But you're not making a decision on the item in the same way, so, looking at Mason's for moving the question, let me see, actually, they have, that's interesting, they have a majority vote. I think we had the 2/3s vote in our existing rules, and I can take a look at that, and I think I kept it at that.
Mason's is a majority, I think we ought to go by Mason's, I don't, you know, I think this point is not appropriate.
I don't necessarily agree with that, but that's not, that's not my call, hang on a second, let me see if I can...
What do you guys think? I think moving to withdraw is actually different than moving the question, because moving the question means we have to vote on it, we need to withdraw is we're taking it away and you can't vote on it.
Yeah.
So they're different.
No, they're different, but why are we, as the Town of Barnstable, saying we need a 2/3s?
Oh, no, no, I'm not talking about that, what I'm saying is, I thought I heard you say withdrawing the question is the same as, as moving the question.
So, under the existing rules, what they were before we started this process, it said, "The previous question shall be put as follows, I call the previous question. All further amendments or debate on the main question shall be suspended until the previous question has been decided by a 2/3s vote." So, this had a 2/3s vote, so I didn't change it, if you wanna change it, I think that's, that's up to you. But I think it's something to think about, because it literally stops debate on that matter, and you take the vote.
Correct.
Now, so Mason says, you know, they, it thinks a majority vote is fine, I did not look, gotta switch glasses, see what Roberts says, I didn't look up every single motion before today's meeting.
Yeah, I mean, from my point of view, I would go with what Mason's and having a majority vote, I don't know why, I understand that one is forcing the vote, but I don't understand why we have to have, you know, the 2/3s with that particular one.
Well, it is a little weird that one of them gets a 2/3s and all the other ones get a majority, yeah.
Well, they do, they do different things, but again, I just stuck with what was there, so I didn't make any change to that.
That's what she meant.
Yeah, but without a good ra, I mean, that's why we're looking at this, I mean, we shouldn't be doing one-off things without...
I mean, I think the 2/3s actually makes sense, but that's just me.
And, and why, why do, can you explain, only because you're obviously the lawyer, so what's your rationale?
No, I mean, I'm not, I'm not like the supreme expert on all the motions, but I think when I saw it in the existing rules, it made sense to me, because it's forcing you to stop discussing the matter and to take a vote right then and there. So I felt like...
It would have been more than a majority, 2/3s, because it has a serious impact in that that shuts everything down if you, if you agree to it. It's probably why it was put in there as a 2/3s that...
But if the majority of the council wants to continue the discussion...
They can't do it.
I think that might be okay.
Well, they would, because what would happen...
They would, because we would all say move the question, and we'd say no. I know, but you need a supermajority.
Yeah, 2/3s.
No, don't forget, this is a negative thing. I move the question, if it does not pass, then you continue debate.
So Roberts says...
To 2/3s.
To, to cut off debate, yes.
So I'm saying...
No, to not cut off, either way.
No.
Either way.
No.
No?
No. In order to pass, it needs a 2/3s.
It means most people feel done.
If it does not get the 2/3s, then you continue the motion. It's not as, like, it has to get 2/3s in order to continue the discussion. It's 2/3s.
Roberts says 2/3s, by the way.
Yeah, I would tend to keep it at 2/3s, because I think it has, has a significant impact, that you're cutting off debate, and people still may have things to say.
So you need, in other words, just because this is like a, a double negative situation for my, what is my head saying?
Yes.
We need to have, if somebody raises their hand, they say, I move the question.
Yeah.
We need to have more people being done with debating.
You need 2/3s of those present and voting.
Saying, we're done, versus...
Simple majority.
So if 8 say we're done, it fails?
It depends on how many present and voted.
Like our last meeting.
Yeah.
And you had no chances.
Yeah, and I think I clarified what was in there originally, I think, I think just said, let me just see, just said 2/3s vote, and I think I said 2/3s present and voting, because it doesn't make sense to be 2/3s of the full body if those people aren't there.
I think that if we had a simple majority, we would have had a 2.
Let me just see if I'm looking at the right version.
Well, no.
When said, call the question.
I can't remember.
No, because it was, because it still passed. There was more than a supermajority.
Right, I know.
Yeah, so the original, hang on, yeah, so the original version of the rules had 2/3s, and it just said until the previous question has been decided by a 2/3s vote. So my change, I kept it at 2/3s, but I said 2/3s present and voting, so that was my slight adjustment, because to me, that made more sense.
Yeah.
So Mason says, there's no real reason for it to be 2/3s, it can be majority, Roberts says, it's absolutely 2/3s. So, I think that is certainly something that you all can decide. From my point of view, I think 2/3s makes sense, because you are shutting off debate and forcing a vote.
I, I think it should be 2/3s, because if, if you just have a simple majority, that's just gonna, that shuts down all debate, and people may or may not have had a chance to speak yet.
It's an easier, it's an easier bar to shut down, yeah, to stopping debate versus a higher threshold for allowing debate to continue.
I see.
Okay. I mean, I'll, I'll go along with you guys. I just, I just like, always like to have the justification, the Mason's is, is clear, but...
It's healthy to have this discussion, because it may come up when we bring it to the full council.
Well, it always comes up.
The, the question is, do we wanna state that, that the other rules are a simple majority?
I think we should, I think we have to clarify that, because to me, it jumps out.
I don't, I don't think you actually need to say that, because in the rules themselves, I believe it says somewhere, the default is that everything is a majority vote unless you say something else. So if you don't say what the quantum of vote is, it's a majority vote of the counselors present and voting.
Does it say that somewhere, is that...
It does say that, because I talked to Counselor Turkelson about this, so I'm just looking for where it is.
Because we're having this conversation, it might not do any harm just adding in and...
I think, I think it said the first paragraph, like, very top, it says...
Where?
What page? Oh, I'm sorry, hold on.
Where? Can you tell us?
I'm wrong, that's not where it is, but I did a search. Yeah, give me one second, because I know, here it is. Rule 8A, except as otherwise provided by the General Laws of the Commonwealth, the Town Charter, Town Ordinance, or these rules, which are established pursuant to Section blah 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 of the Charter, any action taken by the Town Council requiring a vote shall be by a majority of the counselors present and voting. That's Rule 8A, votes.
Okay. Except it strikes me that the explanation comes after 6E.
I know, I just wanted, can we move the votes up, is there a, you know?
Well, but I mean, it could change, it's, you know.
Or maybe you wanna just cross-reference like you have done in the past, I mean, C, C 8A.
Could do that.
I think if we're gonna say C 8A, why wouldn't we just, after, when a motion is under debate, you know, blah blah blah, and then just use this little paragraph and put it...
Because there's more in 8A than just that.
It's all about different votes.
I mean, to me, I mean, I could certainly reference 8A, I just think that, I don't think it's necessary, only because it's not, to me, it's not complicated, it's, the default is everything's a majority vote, unless there's something somewhere that says otherwise. For instance, in the Charter, appropriation votes are a majority of the full council. So regardless of who's there that night, you need seven affirmative votes, that's in the Charter. You know, so it's just zoning matters are either 2/3s or now a majority, depending on, you know, the exception that's now in, in Chapter 48 of the General Laws. So it's really, the default is a majority, everything's a majority vote, unless there's another authority that says it's a different quantum of vote.
I get it.
Okay.
But I don't think it'd do any harm just to reference 8A.
So I could say, because Rule 60 doesn't really talk about the votes, it talks about order of the motions. I could put a note that says, see rule whatever for quantum of vote.
I, I prefer that, the reason is, anybody reading this through for the first time might have that question before they get to 8.
So what would you recommend, should put it right after number 10, above Rule 6E?
6.
On page 8, right after number 10, you put...
Well, I would put it, I would put it at the beginning of Rule 6D.
I would.
I wouldn't put it at the end of 6D, I would put it at the beginning, I think.
Thank you, Karen.
I agree.
And just, just for saying, it doesn't mean anything, but, to be honest with you, I don't, I have never heard at a meeting somebody say to lay on the table, that's what, what struck me, because I've never, I've never experienced this in any other meeting. So that's why I said, is lay on the table the same as tabling it?
Right, because I think that's sort of the shorthand, but then reading both Mason's and Roberts, they're kind of saying, yeah, it's the shorthand that everybody uses incorrectly. And I'm sure in and of itself, it has an actual meaning, because there are other terms that seem to be the correct terms.
Okay, thank you.
I know, it's interesting, I'm learning as I read all this stuff too, so.
So I'm gonna start laying on the table at our meetings.
We were not gonna go there. I refuse to go there.
Sorry. Okay, are we done with 6D? Or 6? All right, my other question was on Rule 8B.
8B?
Yes.
Can I go back just one moment to quorum before we jump ahead? It says what a quorum...
6B.
Yes, 6B. Does that imply that any group of counselors less than a quorum can meet and have no issues?
Yes and no, so...
Eight counselors could get together and...
Eight counselors could get together, and every lawyer in the state would tell you that's a bad idea. And the reason they would say that is, the minute one of those eight counselors talks about what you talked about to one more counselor, you have now violated the open meeting law. Because serial communications are considered to be subject to the law.
I was wondering if you could maybe add another sentence there, just to clarify that. Could you do that, about the whole serial communicate, I don't know, it just seems...
But that has nothing to do with quorum, that has to do with the open meeting law.
Oh. I don't know, it just seems like such a tiny thing for a big deal.
The quorum is a fixed number, it's 9 for this council based on our charter, that's a quorum. Whether you get to a quorum, because five people have a meeting with each other, and then they leave, and every one of those five people, you know, or four of those people talk to another counselor, now you have violated the open meeting law, because that discussion has reached a quorum of a coun, of the council outside of a posted meeting. That has nothing to do with what actually constitutes a quorum, a quorum is 9. And we separately say at the beginning that everyone should be complying with the open meeting law. But that's a whole separate subject.
All right, sorry, Karen.
Thank you.
But to your question, and it's a good one, eight counselors, it is very ill-advised for eight counselors to get together and discuss town business, because you are almost guaranteed to violate the open meeting law the minute one of you talks to another counselor about what you talked about at that meeting.
Okay.
And when we, under the Voting Section under 8A, when we say a majority of the counselors present and voting, we just need literally one more person, like, if we have 10 people, and we need a majority vote to have something go through, we would need to have six people voting yes to make a majority?
You would need, so if you have 10 counselors, I just wanna make sure I'm saying this correctly, and all 10 are voting, so present and voting, then the majority vote yes would be you need six affirmative votes. But if you have 10 counselors, and, well, I don't wanna say two are recused, because then you don't have a quorum.
Yeah, one, one recuses themselves, and we have one...
One recuses themselves, then you need a majority of the counselors present and voting, which is a majority of 9.
And a tie vote means it fails?
A tie vote means it fails, because you need an affirmative vote for something to prevail.
All right.
Thank you, just making sure I understand all that.
Thank you. Good lessons, Karen. All right.
And just not to confuse matters more, if you have someone who abstains, they, and I did mention this in the rules, because I thought it was worth clarifying, if you abstain... If you abstain, which means, and, and people use the terms interchangeably, but you typically recuse because you have a conflict. And if you recuse, you should not only recuse, but you should leave the room. If you abstain for, like, you know, let's say you're abstaining because you, you didn't attend the previous meeting and you don't feel like you should be voting, you still count towards the quorum. But when you're doing the majority present and voting, you're not considered to be someone voting. So when you do the math, it's based on the actual councillor's voting, but you do count towards the quorum.
So if we had ten people attending, I need to do math, and we have one person who abstains.
Yep.
What would the majority number be to have a pass?
It would still be, it would be the majority of nine because it's a majority of the councillors, not just present, but present and voted. And abstention is not... But if you needed that person to get to the quorum, they count. If they're recused, they do not count.
Okay, thank you. That makes more sense when you just said it twice.
Yeah.
That's okay.
That's good.
But I did actually put that in the rules, I think, near the beginning because I thought that was, that was worthwhile.
Okay, move on. Eight B, it was just, it just struck me that it says, "When the question is put to a vote, every councillor present shall vote yes, no, abstention or pass." And I said, should it be abstained? So that they're all in the present tense.
Yeah, I think that reads better. If, if you all like that better, I think that reads better. I can make that change.
Yeah, abstain is better.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, and... Oh, so also on eight B, "Prior to the announcement of the roll call vote, any councillor may have his or her name called again to record him/her differently." And I'm suggesting, would it be clearer to say, "Any councillor may request to have his or her name?"
I, I would, I would slightly adjust it to do what, and I think it's a good suggestion, but I would say any councillor at their request may have his or her name to make it clear that once you ask for it, you get it.
Okay, because it just was, felt, struck me awkward that any councillor may have his he, her name called. So I'm, I'm like...
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a good, that's a good catch and I think that would be clearer. So I'm gonna say, any councillor may, at their request...
We haven't had that situation.
But what is still even...
Change your vote.
You can change your vote.
Any councillor, at their request, actually, any councillor at their request may have his or her name called again.
So we go in alphabetical order. Chris Clark votes yes. She sees how everybody else votes and she goes, eh.
I'm the only one. I'll make it unanimous.
I'd like to change it.
Okay, so when, when we're saying prior to the announcement of the roll call vote, we're actually saying prior to the announcement of the results of the roll call vote. You can change, because I was like, so before you're voting, you're saying, I want to re-vote, like you haven't voted, I... I, you know, that's...
Yeah, I could add, I could add that. I think that's clear. Yep.
And obviously, there's no way if you just have a vote, a voice, yeah, voice, vote, for someone to change their vote because it, you have to go through the reconsideration thing, I guess.
Oh, but it says a roll call.
So if you just do a voice vote, there is something in here, I'd have to look for it, where it says, oh, it says it right there, right above. "If any matters requiring a vote, a roll call may be requested by any councillor."
So I have a question. If, if we, if, if we said all of those in favor, say aye, and we, we, one of us could say, I request it to be a roll call vote?
Yes, absolutely.
And I think there's also something in here where if you doubt the vote, then it can be retaken with a roll call. Let me just see where, I saw that.
Yeah, I remember that.
I remember that too, yeah.
Yeah, I was looking at it before the meeting. Where is it? Never find anything, but I'm looking for it.
Is it under reconsideration?
No, because it's not really a reconsideration. It's, I don't think it, it would be there. Maybe it is. Let me see, introduction, agenda. I know, I just read it before the meeting. I thought I saw that. Maybe not. I wonder if it's, um... I was reading the charter earlier. I wonder if it's in there, but I doubt it.
I recall here. Wait a minute, I just read this.
I'd have to look for it. Um, I'm gonna suck. Uh, I think it's... Well, there is a place where it says, I think, rule four, base, but that's, let's see. That's when asking, shall the decision of the chair stand as the judgment of the council? If any member doubts a vote, the chair without further debate upon the question shall require a roll call vote. But I don't know that that's what, like in the context, we're talking about. Yeah, doubting a decision of the chair is when the chair has basically made some procedural ruling and the rest of the council disagrees. So that's points of order, questions of order. That's where the chair has made a ruling and someone says, I don't, I don't think so. If any member doubts a vote, all votes shall be declared by the presiding officer. Maybe that should be in the voting section because all votes shall be declared by the presiding officer after receipt of the tally from the clerk of the council. Oh, see, this is under duties of the presiding officer chair.
Yeah.
Maybe that should just be repeated in the votes.
Yeah, that sounds good. Repeat it under votes.
So I'll, I'll repeat where it says, "All votes shall be declared by the presiding officer. If any member doubts a vote, the chair without further debate shall require a roll call vote." So I'll leave it where it is, but I'll, I'll say it again in the votes section. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Either that or cross-reference.
Yeah, because I knew I read it somewhere. I was like, that's in here. And that makes sense because if you're doing a voice, a voice vote and someone thinks that's not right, then you would do the roll call.
You good with that? Are you ready for me to move on? Turning over?
I am, yeah. I'm just making notes of things that I need to put in red, so I change it again.
So my last is rule eleven A. It's on page ten. And it says, "All standing and ad hoc committees of the council shall be advisory to the town council." But I'm reflecting...
Where are you? Paragraph one, two? Mid, mid son's mid, mid paragraph. She's in the fourth line.
Second paragraph, fourth line.
All standing and ad hoc?
Oh, yeah.
The first paragraph.
First, I'm sorry.
Fourth line, yeah.
First paragraph, I'm sorry. I'm looking at something else.
Now, keep in mind, Chris, that, that that says, "All standing and ad hoc committees of the council, not of the town," which is what the regulatory committees are. Because I went back and read it after I read your email.
Okay, then I understand. And I, I have to say, I get tripped up with that. So my point to, um, turning over is that the regulatory committees have their own authority. Border Health, CONCOM, they, they act under the authority of state law, so they don't answer as advisory to the council, but...
Now, the reason, because again, we didn't get into that in this document because these are the town council rules that govern you guys. And so we only mention, I think, the committees of the town because you all serve as liaisons to those committees. And it was in that context that it kind of came up. But otherwise, we're talking about committees of the council because these are the town council rules.
Okay, got it. Thank you. So does anyone else have?
No, I just think these are so much amazingly better than what we had. It's dramatic, I think.
Oh, yeah.
I think this is a good product and I hope it gets looked at frequently, you know?
And I'll tell you, just to be honest, on, on all the motions and that, I mean, I have kind of learned what they are and how they work when they come up in meetings. And I have to advise you all because I don't hold myself out as an expert on every parliamentary move that someone could make. But that's why we have the, the guidance that we have because that's what I look to when something comes up and try to figure out how that should work. So I, I just don't, don't want to hold myself out as saying like I'm the expert on all those motions, but trying to include information that I think is helpful. And then if I need to look something up during a meeting, I'll do that.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate your thoroughness and professionalism. Any other concerns?
No, I think we're good.
I think we're good to present this and, you know?
Actually, I do have a question for Karen regarding, if the topic comes up, Roberts' rules versus Masons', did you have a recommendation?
I don't, only because, um, I, I really, to be honest, looked at Roberts today for the first time when I was looking up lay on the table and I wanted to see what both of the books said. And they were fairly consistent. I will, I will spend a little more time looking at Roberts. I don't have, um, I don't have, I, I don't have a real preference as of today. I, I thought it was sort of interesting that they both pretty much said the same thing, at least on that one. They do say different things on the quantum of vote for move the question.
Okay.
I don't know. I mean, we could incorporate both of them as guidance, but I think, you know, you may want one to supersede in case there's a conflict and that gets crazy, so. I, I, we, you know, Allison and I will take a closer look at that and, and be prepared for the council discussion on that. And obviously, I could let you know sort of where we come out on it. But right now, I, I haven't looked at it enough to, to form an opinion.
And I don't think there's anything in here that ties us to one or the other, right?
No, it is. There, there is a reference in here that says, Masons'. Now, Masons', and, and it's clear in here, Masons is not, it says, it's a, you look to Masons for guidance. It's not like you absolutely have to do something. But you can't cover every single procedural thing in the world. I mean, if you look at both of those books, they are inches thick. So you really can't do it in the rules and you need to be able to refer to some expert guidance. But the rules as they're currently written do, I think, still continue to refer to Masons. And what I can do, excuse me, is I had talked with councillor Clark because when we bring this to the council, there would be a rationale that would, I would work with councillor Clark on that memo to basically say, here are the things that the committee did, here are the changes we made, you know, highlighting sort of the things that have changed for the benefit of the council. And I can include in there and highlight, you know, the current rules, say we refer to Masons as guidance. We did not change that, but that's something that may be a good topic for discussion when the council considers this, or something like that, just to tee it up.
It's on page seven, under parliamentary guidelines, with particular emphasis on Mason's manual under six A, the beginning of that, so that's where it's...
Right, and it does say, "Due regard shall be given to the entire scholarship of parliamentary procedures." So I think if Roberts has a much better, easier explanation to follow, we could certainly use that. If the two conflict, I think this would say you'd probably go with Masons.
And it does say, "But resort may also be had for guidance to other authorities and examples." So I think we have it covered.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to be very careful though. It doesn't look like we're picking and choosing for any particular matter which quantum of votes that we're looking for or require. You know, if you switch back and forth, you're gonna just lead to confusion and...
Yeah, and I think in the memo to the council, we could even say, for example, the quantum of vote for moving the question according to Masons would be majority, according to Roberts would be two thirds. The current version of the town council rules is two thirds. This committee is recommending that we stay with the two thirds, but we could call out that the two different sources say two different things.
And particularly during a meeting, you can't, well, I don't think that would be...
Right, I need to know, like, what am I looking at? And then from my point of view, I would, I would say, well, if I, if that's not clear to me, maybe I'll see what the other one says and see if that makes it clear.
Right.
Okay, anything else? Are we ready to move this to the council?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for all of that, Karen. And I, I'm bad with my alphabet. I skipped over a public comment, so, um...
Well, Larry came on late.
We have Larry, okay.
Larry came on late.
An item B. So, um...
And actually, before you get to public comment, I wanted to ask you, we address public comment in the rules, and I guess I wonder, do you want to read that statement before every? This is sort of my last reality check on that before we bring this to the council.
Yeah, it's a little bit long.
Yeah.
But I, I think it has value. I think it sets the tone that, that we're looking for.
I had even suggested to councillor Tamis, president Tamis, that we put it on the agenda, on every agenda. But he thought it was too cumbersome.
Yeah, I think if he, if he, if he reads it, I think that's fine.
But because we put this in the council rules, we're not necessarily delivering that information to the public.
Well, no, it says at the beginning of public comment, "This statement shall be read, read by the presiding officer substantially in the form set forth below." So the rules require that the presiding officer, typically the president, would read this statement at the beginning of every public comment. That's why I'm asking.
I, I have a question about this. As far as when we say, um, "No member of the public may speak without first being recognized." I mean, you know, when someone walks up to the podium, we don't say, "In, you know, Betty, please speak and Chris, please speak." I, I mean, I, I'm just trying to think if we, if it's a way to chop it down. I know it's only one line, but it's kind of a free for all. I mean, I guess the only other time where we maybe allow somebody to speak is like, we've had a couple of meetings where people kind of barge in a little bit into an item and they're like, well, I want to speak on this. And then it's kind of a, you know, the, the presiding officer's purview to acknowledge them to allow to make comment outside of public comment. I don't know that we need to say that we need to be recognized by the council president. I mean, it's like, we're opening it up. I mean...
Well, I, I think you, the value of that is that if someone starts speaking from their chair, so you're out of order. That you don't, you're not, it's specifically there that they're not allowed to speak without being recognized.
I like it because we've had people speaking from their chairs. There's been, before you were in the council, there were some meetings that were just crazy.
It's how you keep organization within the town council meeting.
Are you guys talking about councillors now? Are you talking about residents?
Both.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm following. But, but actually, I think the, the rule is the same because the president is running the meeting and you shouldn't be, people just shouldn't be talking at will. You know, even councillors, if you want to speak, you should be recognized by the chair so that you're not all talking over each other and you're not, you know, that, that's why the, the council president runs the meeting.
Well, then I guess you get to add that to your spiel every day or every meeting, which is...
Well, but this, this spiel is, is for the public.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, he would say that before public comment, right? He would read it before public comments every night.
No, I think it's a good reminder because we've had people doing this, people coming up and speaking individually to councillors, pointing them out by name. I mean, it happened in a couple of meetings ago. So, um, and do we also, in that, that, where we also ask the members to refrain from making audible comments, do we want to say more than that or audible gestures? I, I'm referring to all the clapping and stuff. Certain people, do we care about the clapping? Certain people, do we care about the clapping? Is that okay?
Well, I, I think that's a lot harder to control than the speeches.
Yeah.
Well, but you could ask. I mean, they're really supposed to sit there quietly and speak during public comment, which is when they have their opportunity to, to talk to the council. But it's a meeting of the council. It's not a free-for-all. There are designated times, either public comment or during a public hearing on a particular item, where the public has the right to get up and say what they want to say. But they don't have the right to just participate in the meeting because it's not their meeting.
How would you still...
I could add from making audible comments or clapping.
I think, or clapping.
Or booing.
Or cheering, or cheering or jeering. I mean, that would be audible.
Yeah, I think that would be audible comments. I could add, or clapping.
Or throwing things.
Although there are obviously times when, like, we were making the presentation the other night.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a clapping event.
True.
Yeah, just thought I'd throw it out there.
At the end of the veteran's speech, people often clap.
Well, that's right, they do.
But that's not public comment.
That's not public comment.
That comes under the order of the process. I don't, I don't consider, I mean, public comment, we take the pledge of, we read about the veteran, we take the pledge of allegiance, public comment. And public comment is its own little section of the meeting. Like when, when we, when you gave the award and we were all clapping, perfectly, I don't think that comes under public comment. That was actually a presentation of appreciation. So, I think people have good social skills, hopefully. Okay, so we're going to add...
You want me to add the clapping or just leave it alone?
Leave it alone, I think.
Leave it?
Yeah.
Let people clap?
I don't think you can stop it, to be honest with you.
The speech, you can say, stop. People start clapping, you kind of, I don't...
You can use gavel.
Oh, that's true.
That's true. That's true. Yeah.
More pepper spray?
No, I think the audible comments, again, you weren't there, there was one meeting, people were just screaming from the audience. It was just awful.
I remember that meeting.
Absolutely awful.
Well, and there have been meetings where people have literally turned to me and started talking to me, and I have not responded, although I certainly could have. But I would, I would prefer that that not happen since they should be talking to you or not at all.
Yeah.
Do you want to say audible comments and noises?
Or what?
Noises.
You'll feel better.
No, I'm not worried, but...
Yeah.
Well, you could cover it, or noises.
Yeah, audible.
Well, a comment is different than a noise.
Well, may just leave it as it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
All righty.
But I like this. I think it covers it well. It has to be reinforced. And if Craig's okay with reading it, I mean, I like it.
We can laminate it and leave it as part of your meeting materials.
Yeah.
The next president may throw it right out.
Oh, no, not only adopt the rules.
It's in the rules.
Do you want me to laminate it for you? I love my laminate.
Yes. Make a copy for each of us. For each seat in the audience.
There you go.
So, anybody have any other comment for turning over? No, copy on them.
No, thank you for all your help.
Yeah, it's been amazing. Yep.
Yeah, I feel that we have a healthy path forward. Thanks to you.
Yeah, I think it's in pretty good shape to bring to the council. Thank you.
Do you want to go up next?
Yeah, I will.
Don't forget public comment.
I got that number B, or letter B. So, Mr. Moore, do you have any public comment for us today?
Chris, I really don't. Kristen knows, I've really been under the weather the last forty-eight, fifty hours.
Oh, geez.
And I really wasn't prepared to, I was going to listen to see where you were. I got the feeling you were, that this was going to be the final meeting. You haven't said that yet. Otherwise, I've submitted all my documentation and it's, it's still out there and it's, the question is, how is it going to appear before the remaining eight members of the council? We'll see. But any event, I don't have anything else to say today.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry you don't feel well, and I know stuff is going wrong.
Well, it's human at this time of year, living on the Cape. What else is going to happen?
Yes, and thank you for not sharing...
I'll be all right.
With us.
I'll be all right, thanks. Okay.
All right. Thank you so much. So, moving on to letter D, approving the meeting minutes?
Well, could I?
Oh, sorry.
While we're discussing this, is it appropriate at this point to make a motion that just be moved forward to the council as amended today?
Yes, so moved. So moved, second.
And do you want to delegate to the chair and possibly me, the preparation of the rationale?
Yes, absolutely.
Please.
Okay.
Second.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Can this get on our next meeting, Karen?
Forget it.
Plenty of time.
When is the next meeting? The next meeting is the twenty-seventh. Possibly. There's some other priority items too for that meeting, so it may or may not, but if not, I think the one after that is just the week after.
Six, March sixth.
So, yeah, it's in the hopper.
All right.
Cool.
But for Mr. Moore's benefit, this is not our last meeting because after this, we will be addressing the town code. But in the meantime...
Okay, so you're going to set a date on that, then? The code is...
Yes.
The code is miniscule compared to this in some respects, in other ways, it's, it's not. But so, but whatever you do, if you get a new date for the code, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, that's what we'll do. Thank you. So, we'll approve the minutes?
I'm hoping to approve the minutes for January sixth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Cindy. You do a thorough job. Let's shake that. So, our meeting...
Meeting to be adjourned.
Any suggestions on our list?
I'm not sure I have one more copies.
Yeah. Cindy, any suggestions on what, when this room might be available?
You just give me a date and what I'll do is reach out to Sarah. We're looking at March, though, just so you know. The second, let's see, second week in March is when they start.
I was going to suggest the end of March. Because we have, we have the council meetings on the twenty-seventh and the sixth, and then the twentieth.
You want to say the twenty-fourth? Does that work?
Sure.
Twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
At what time?
Three or four.
This three works well, I think. I don't know, what day is the twenty-fourth?
It's a Monday.
I'm just wondering, is Seth not here because it's too early? Maybe you could reach out to him? So, either three or perhaps four, if we have to. Three's fine with me.
Now, is there some, we can...
Kristen, you actually have a month or two.
Mondays and Wednesdays, I don't have patient care, so those are pretty good days for me. I don't...
What can we prepare? What can we look at? I mean...
I mean, there's a long gap between now and then. That's like seven weeks, four to six weeks.
We'll be dealing with the council.
Well, I know, but I mean, this is supposed to end at the end of March, and I'll ask you for the twenty-fourth.
Oh, yes, we better ask to extend.
We're not going to... Yeah. I mean, I guess my point is, I know we're not going to end at the end of March, but my point is, is we're like losing almost, how many weeks is that between now and then? Basically, today is the tenth, so we have one, two, three, four, five. We're going to lose six weeks between now and then.
Well, can we get an overview of what we're looking at, of the scope of the code?
Yeah, like, how are we going to go about this or...
Karen, do you have any guidance? Suggestions on the scope of what we're looking at?
I, I don't, although I did talk with Ann Cork this morning and she said, she did follow up with the company that does, that prints the code and the code updates. And I think she said she got some type of cost estimate for them, for them to go through it and look for inconsistencies. And I said I might volunteer her to come to the next meeting and she was okay with that. So, I don't know what her schedule is like, but if you would like her to join us...
I think that would be good. The inconsistencies are those things in the code that only talk about counselors? Is that it?
No.
No, I think it's, it's if some ordinance got passed and then there was some other ordinance and now there's some inconsistency between the two that wasn't caught. I believe that's what she's talking about.
Across the spectrum of every ordinance?
Wow.
Ann can speak to this better than I can.
It seems incredibly broad. I don't know.
It's because it's been patched over the years.
I know, but that, that's the...
It sounds like a needle in a haystack.
Exactly.
That's why I thought it might be helpful if she attended the meeting and she could tell you what the scope of the workforce company could do and what it would cost and get your sense from that.
So, the company, from what Ann Cork told me, if I, if I hear, heard her correctly, is that they can do a search and replace, you know, see what, on my thing, counselor spelled with one L or counselor spelled with two L's.
I know, but that's just a, I mean...
That's simple, but I'm just saying that you can ask, give it a query and have it search for other inconsistencies.
But if we're looking at...
And that's, and that's a very easy one for them to do, but I think there are, I believe there are more substantive things that they might catch that it would take us forever to even find unless some...
They can do with a...
Unless you know it because you're dealing with the issue and you're like, oh, that's wrong. But if you don't know it, you know, no one's going to sit down and leave...
But the idea is the things that the council has passed are ordinances to see inconsistency? I mean...
Where if something is now outdated and should be removed or, I don't want to speak for Ann, but I believe, I believe it was some type of inconsistency within the code that they could find.
And would this be something we go to the department heads and say, are there things about the code that you deal with on a regular basis that's...
I think we'd have to work through the town manager and have him speak to his department heads.
Well, would you like to do that now? And he could reach out to his department heads now?
Yeah, I'd like to make use of this time, yeah.
Think about, you know, is there anything, you know, there might be some, you know, Director Florence might be like, this part really is a mess. And he might know that off the top of his head because he's been...
Well, Director Florence is a good example. He says all the time that it's unenforceable what the town council passed. So, that's ridiculous.
So, I'm just wondering, there might be things top of mind that, that we, they could be, have the next six weeks to kind of be compiling because they're dealing with their sections of the town code on a regular basis, so...
Right.
I mean, there are ordinances in there that are no longer enforceable because the courts have come down and said, you can't do that.
Right, and that's a good example.
Whether it be accosting a person of the opposite sex, whether it be sauntering and loitering, you know.
There was a court case that we lost, I think, years ago, and no one, the offending provisions of the code are still in there. And I think what staff has done is just said, well, that's unenforceable, but it's still there. So, I think that's a good example of if it's, if it's no longer good law, we need to remove it.
And I know that the zoning board of appeals, I'm the liaison to that, and they've come forward with things that they run in all the time, that like the various businesses we have on the books don't really exist and they have to try to, you know, shoehorn things in.
Like trailer camps or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
So, maybe we need to...
So, maybe you want to ask the regulatory committees?
The regulatory committees are probably the ones that are, you know, really in the bull's eye on this. Yes.
Then again, that gives them six weeks to kind of even think about it.
Right, yeah.
The other thing, it just occurred to me, is I'm on the committee to review committees, and when that ad hoc committee completes its work, there might be additional changes to the code. So, we might not want to surrender the code changes to the company until that...
Yeah, but I think, I think, I think that Town Clark knows that because she said it's going to be a bulk upload and that if we do it all at once, if it's like a per, per entry thing versus every, you know, we should get everything together. I mean, obviously, this has been going on, there's no hurry to get it done next week, right? We could wait till all the committees are all to kind of complete.
So, how would we get to the regulatory...
But I think the committee on the committees has a much narrower scope. I mean, you're looking at the entire code and issues that come up within the code. The committee on committees, I think, is really looking at the effectiveness of committees, should they continue to exist? Is their purpose stated clearly? I think it's a different, it's a different mandate for that committee.
So, how do we write or task the regulatory committees to do this prior to our first meeting?
I, I would suggest that you may want to reach out first to the town manager because I think for the most part, there are staff that staff those committees.
Oh, that's true, actually, yeah. Most of the regulatory...
It may make sense to have them sort of coordinate.
Good idea.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
That would, that's an official...
That would put us much further down the road and not waste all this time.
Good idea, good suggestion.
Are you going to do that, then?
Yeah, I will speak with the town manager. I can speak to him on Wednesday. And we'll, we'll, we'll mention this discussion and what the goal is. So, I think that's a productive path.
Good.
And I will also check with Counselor Burdick to see if three o'clock is too early. That's very considerate, appreciate that. Otherwise...
And I think, just from my point of view, and I think I can speak for Allison, three or four o'clock is fine with, with us.
Okay.
That's not an issue for us.
Yep. All right. So, we have a tentative meeting date after I confirm with Counselor Burdick. And, and we will advance the discussion with the town manager about any code conflicts through regulatory staff. I mean, regulatory committees. Anything else from us?
I think that covers it.
Do we...
And did you want to reach out to Ann? Did you?
No, and Ann should be there at the first meeting, right.
Right.
Which means earlier would probably be better for Ann, you know, not to make her...
That's probably true. Yeah, that's probably true.
I'll ask her when we get done with this meeting.
Couldn't Counselor Burdick zoom in?
Yep. Well, actually, I don't know if...
I, I don't know.
...exclusion in our ad hoc committees when they were set up.
I think there were issues, and I don't want to speak for Lynn, who's not here, but I thought there were issues about hybrid meeting, hybrid meetings meaning hybrid with the board.
Right.
Because of what that required for staff, so...
Yeah, if you're going to allow a Zoom link just for staff, for counselors or staff to attend, that's a private link outside of the public comment link. So, they have to set up two links.